Everybody, welcome to the Board of Fire Commissioners meeting for November thirteenth, twenty twenty five. Like to start by all that original.
Glad to lead this to the United States of America and to the Republic from which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty just as a moral.
We could all remain standing, please, for a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, then this is all set. Approval of prior meeting minutes for October ninth, twenty twenty five meeting.
Like to make a motion to accept the October ninth meeting minutes of the Board of Fire Commissioners.
All in favor? Second? I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public public participation of anybody from. Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
It'll be locked.
Okay, it was locked.
It's been locked since I got here.
It was supposed to be open.
Oh, maybe she's up front.
She, maybe she's up.
Are you going on Zoom? Oh, you are? Okay.
Yeah, he's on.
Okay.
Like to make note that Commissioner Stoddard is now on Zoom. Let's just wait one second for, yeah, the back, hello. Public participation for the first time, if anyone would like to speak to the commission. Yes, if you could please just state your name and address for the record, please. Welcome.
I just have some concerns. I addressed my concerns at the town council and for me that they basically have no control over the fire commission group, so that's why I'm at this particular meeting. I have a concern as a member of the town and as a taxpayer, taxpayer reading the local paper and all the concerns with the recent lawsuits that have been going on with the selected commissioner team and department. Okay, I have a concern not only because these lawsuits are costly as a taxpayer of the town, and I'm also concerned about the safety of the women firefighters in the department. And I'm concerned about the continued lawsuits and decrease in enrollment from women coming to the department due to those lawsuits. I'd like to know what the commissioner or the commission has in plan to deter this discontinued, you know, harassment on going forward. Is there training in place for the members of the department, what, you know, what is planned so this doesn't continue? And the town, meaning myself as a taxpayer, doesn't have to endure these additional costs for the continu- the continuance of this.
Okay, thank you. If the commission liked to comment at the end, the next part, we have, we can have commissioner remarks on public participation, so we don't interject.
That's fine, I saw it on the paper.
Thank you. That, anything else? That's it? Thank you. Anybody else have anything under public participation for the first time? Okay, we'll close public participation and move on to the rest of the agenda. Commissioner remarks?
I will hold my remarks till the end.
Okay, I will do the same thing. Thank you. Organizational protocol vote for chairman and vice chairman?
Like to make a motion that I would like to have Brian Whalen become the chairman of the fire commission.
Second? Kent, you're muted? Are you good?
No, I'm not muted, but I don't want to second it.
We have. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And I'm abstaining.
Okay. Two ayes and one abstention. I would like to make a motion to appoint vice chair of the Board of Fire Commissioners, and I'd like to make motion that Frank DeMaio is vice chair of the commission.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All in favor? Congratulations to everybody. Okay, moving along, communications and for monthly reports.
I have reports from all of the chiefs and the fire marshals. I was looking at the chief's report part four. I understand that we have approximately eight applications in process, and unfortunately, we have two resignations, one resignation and one retirement from the department. Resignation was submitted by firefighter Kyle Roberts, and we now have a retirement from Jim Storky. Any comment from part four? All set?
Yep.
Okay.
Just, well, I can make a comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I'd just like to thank those two individuals, Kyle Roberts, who used to be the captain of Station Four. I know he has a young family, and I'd like to personally thank him for all the time that he spent with the department. And I'd also like to personally thank Jim Storky. He was a very good, close friend of mine. He's done many, many years, thirty plus years, over thirty years in the fire department. And I'd like to commend him on his retirement also. Two, two great, great individuals.
Perfect guys.
Yep.
I'm sorry to see, I'm sorry to see Kyle having to do what he needed to do, but.
Just, just on a note of Kyle, Kyle just recently had a second baby. He's extremely busy with the family and he's very busy with his business and he travels a lot now down to Florida. So that's part of the reason why he could not maintain his membership there in Florida permanent. And Jim Storky, also do want to congratulate him on his forty years of service. Tremendous accomplishment for him, and we'll sorely miss.
Yep. Thank you, chief.
Question for car three, under the, under pre-plans, training division will be scheduling additional walkthroughs based on our ISO data. Any information on any of the new projects that are presently taking place within the town?
We, we are planning on doing a walkthrough of the building that's going up on Cedar Street. That one is still a work in progress, a little too soon for us to get into it. I know as they're starting to put up an interior lumber that's going up now, concrete work appears to be complete. We will be, we have that. We are doing a drill coming up with tinfoil, and we're going to be doing standbites at the hotel, same location next door. And we have more coming. It's just a matter of getting them scheduled and working with the businesses and down to get them done.
Timmy's doing that this Sunday? Is that?
Yeah, yeah, Sunday morning.
Sunday morning?
Nine o'clock here for starting, ten o'clock there. For the, do the standby.
Any additional information on what's happening at Culver Street? Because we're no longer, we're no longer doing a fire watch.
No, so Culver Street's just moving ahead with the project. The connection has been made up to the point where they needed this for the insurance. So it's, it's just a building in progress.
Okay.
Believe there.
I'm having trouble hearing you. Trying not.
Kent, can you hear us okay?
No, I can't.
Okay, great.
Okay, we're back in business.
Back in business. Sorry for the little technical error.
DJ, anything you want to speak about on your report?
No, I, I think I included everything. The one thing that I will say is just a kudos to the office staff. I know they they jumped in to help out the human services folks. So when the notification came out for SNAP, actually John Hoffman let it up, but we were able to donate two hundred and fifty dollars just from our staff for gift cards to the human services for the food bank. So they did a great job with that.
Nice, very good.
Very nice. Thank you, DJ.
Thank you very much, DJ. Right.
Anything else? DJ?
Oh, no, I'm good unless you have any questions.
No, I'm, I'm good after reviewing your report, so I'm all set.
Okay.
Thank you, DJ.
Ledger status, Commissioner Stoddard, you didn't get a packet, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'd like to, I did review the ledger status. It seems like we're on track where we're supposed to be for this time of year, and I'd like to make a motion to accept the ledger status as presented to the commission.
I'll make it, I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, moving on the agenda, old business, space needs for company three and company four.
So the project of company four is moving forward. I've met with the architect twice now. Basically, just preliminary meetings to discuss what we're looking for in the building so that he can do a layout of the design and the interior part of it. A purchaser has been cut for the architectural design and work for the preliminary design slash cost, avoid what cost the town for the building. And that building committee is moving forward. It's in recess until January, just so that the architect can do some of his work.
Okay, thank you, chief. Company one, staying with you, chief, company one floor project.
One floor project is still ongoing. The company asked to come back and do some repairs on the decals on the floors. Hopefully, within the next week or two, that is supposed to be completed. And we're just continuing on until that's finished. Hopefully, cross our fingers, it'll be done in two weeks.
Thank you. Naming of the training center, that's ongoing. We had some progress this month. The sign is done. We're just waiting for it to get hung, which we're working on. And that's where we stand on that for right now. We are trying to get a date. But as of right now, we just have to wait for it to be the sign to be installed. Pension plan? You want to talk about that, Frank?
Well, in terms of the pension plan, I know that we have our work cut out for us. We're going to meet with Janet and discuss all of the different steps that need to be taken for us to move the pension plan forward. And one of the ideas that I have personally come up with is going to try, or we are going to try as a commission to get the town to agree to look at the possibility of doing a three-year plan in terms of increasing the pension over a three-year period each and every year, so that we don't have to come back every single year during budget season to try to convince them to increase our pension. So hopefully, that's one of the things that we're going to be discussing with the finance department to see if this is something that we can possibly do. Obviously, I was not aware that we have to deal with the town attorney, the insurance committee, and the pension committee. So there's, there's several steps that we're going to have to take, but that's going to be, you know, we're going to focus in on that's making a priority for us this year in twenty twenty six to move this forward because it has been a very long time since the pension plan has been even looked at. So that's number one priority for, at least for myself.
And mine also.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. New engine two service two.
Engine two has been delivered. It's actually here. Company two's has been doing training on it. There's actually another training session for the pump and interior stuff, I believe, this Saturday. So that process is moving forward. We're just waiting for the equipment delivery and hopefully, hopefully, we can have it on the line in the next month or two. Looks fantastic. They did a great job on it. The new service two is at the outfitter. Just waiting on that delivery. I would, there's no definitive timeframe on that. Could be a month, could be two. It just depends on how fast they get it done.
Okay, thank you. Update on rules and regs. The commission, the commission is hoping to present something at our December meeting for the department to review for the month of December and hopefully vote and if there isn't any changes on them for the January meeting. Do you agree, Commissioner?
Yes, absolutely.
So we'll be looking forward to getting that done for December and January for the rules and rights.
Just because you bring up the December meeting, are we meeting at the oldy?
Oh, yes, yes. Remind during Commissioner Marks, Commissioner, we'll, we'll make sure that that gets out at the old. That's our annual thing. Sale of apparatus?
So once the two gets back on the line, when the two gets on the line, we'll be putting will be put in and sales for sales. And moving that out to sell that apparatus as, as we've done in the past.
Okay. Thank you. Right, that's it. Under old business, before we start new business, I'd like to have a motion to add something to new business for the town manager to add two names to the request by the town manager to add two names for the Chapman Street Building Committee. If we could get a motion on that.
Kent, you want me to, you want me to do the motion?
I'll make a motion that we add Chris Ferry.
No, we just need to.
Oh, I, I, I make a motion that we add it to the agenda.
To the agenda.
Yeah.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. We'll put that, that'll be third, Commissioner. So first thing under new business is the CIP budget due December fifth, twenty twenty five.
It will be the chief set sat down this past week to go over the CIP. We put all of our requests together, just finalized in the narratives and stuff like that. We're presenting that to the commission for approval, and we'll have it submitted on time to get it in on the deadline next Tuesday.
Thank you.
So we'll have to have a special meeting to approve that because we don't meet before December, December fifth.
Right.
Correct. Do I, I, I think for CIP also or CIP or just the operating budget? Okay, so if we need a special meeting, we will definitely have one. Operating budget due January second, twenty twenty six.
So the chief said sent out something to all the company captains, the divisions to get their statement of needs in for this coming year. We'll be sitting down with each division and captains to go over their budget request and getting ready for the deadline in January.
Okay.
We'll have that presented to you guys for hopefully December, so you can look at it and prove it.
Thank you. And now I would like to have a motion to add Donald Brown and Chris Ferry, Captain Chris Ferry and firefighter Donald Brown to the Chapman Street Building Committee for request from the town manager.
I would like to make a motion that both of those gentlemen be added to the building committee for Chapman Street.
And I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. And that takes us down to public participation for the second time. Chief Drummer.
Mr. DeMaio, while you're talking about insurance, pensions, and stuff like that, don't forget us all, guys.
We won't.
And I don't want the story while you don't count. We have a pension. Make sure it gets corrected.
Yes, sir.
Because it hasn't been looked at for fifteen, sixteen years.
I'm well aware of that. That's one of the reasons why that.
Well, I've heard stories that we're not included, we're not the.
It will be looked at.
Thank you.
I can, I can assure you that that's part of my plan.
Thank you.
Chief Stegmaier.
So there's been a lot of assumptions and accusations in social media regarding lawsuits and that. I just want to clear the air on some of them. For the very first lawsuit, the federal judge dismissed the fire chiefs and the department itself from any liability before any litigation started that lawsuit. We've been silent in addressing these, the accusations on Facebook because they are personal issues, and we are bound by law really not to discuss them. As for the one that's happening now, we're going to let the court sort it out. We're not going to argue with anybody online. We're not going to address them. But as for females in the fire department, out of the eight applicants that we have, two of them are female. We just recently had two females graduate from Academy of Fire Department one. We have three female officers that are on recruitment and retention team that help recruit, actively recruit members. We are the most diverse fire department that we've ever been. In the past, we've always been by male dominated. It's not that case anymore. We're really pushing for diversity because it's, it's the belief of this administrative staff that your fire department needs to reflect its community, and that's what makes a strong fire department. So we've been really pushing it. Females are integrated in our department. They're very important to our apartment. And if anybody has any questions regarding that, please feel free to see me on the side. I'm ready for some numbers. Discuss it, but I just wanted to clear the air and answer any questions and address any of this.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, chief. Chief. Hold on one second. Chief Stegmaier, while we, I'll comment after, I think. Thank you, chief. Chief. Chief, that's Chief Drummer.
I'd just like to commend this, the command staff as far as the recruitment of people in this department. If you look around the different departments around us, they're empty. This department is blocking at the teeth. They have a diversified amount of people, women, men, kids. The cadet division. I think it's half women, girls. They love it. So all this bull crap that's going out in the media is bull crap. And I'm telling you, I'm sick of it. And that the add this directed to these people that are doing so much for this department and this town. It's not, it's not called for. That's my opinion as a past chief of this department. The diversification that's taken place in the last twenty years is astronomical. So I, I just want to say thank you to the command staff for what they've done for this department and this town. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, chief.
Am I allowed to be?
Yeah, yeah. Yes, you are allowed to. Yes.
Just diverse. I didn't say it was diverse. Then you keep asking, answering my question of diversity, that wasn't my, my concern. My concern is for all the women that who now I've hired, what if training is in place to ensure that there is not going to have any issues going on and potential hidden lawsuits? That was my concern. She never said anything about diversity.
Chief Drummer, would you like to answer that question, please?
I just want to bring up the training that goes on in this department. I know it's been questioned multiple times that we don't have the qualified officers in this department and so forth. Since I took over as chief and Chief Regina is taking over as training chief, our training in the department has been tremendous. We have pushed for more training throughout the department. In five years' time, we've almost doubled what we've had for training in the entire history of the fire department. So we've pushed as much training as possible. Our officer is the highest training and certified out of anyone around us. All of our lieutenants are at least fire officer one. We all go through specialized training as much as we possibly can. Every year, every firefighter has to go through an online sexual harassment course. We also, every fire, every person, every offender also has to go through an in-person sexual harassment training. We're really, because that, so, so that's, that's our insurance carrier who actually is, is providing that, that training product. So, and that was actually at the request of the town council a couple of years ago because we were specifically just doing online training. They asked for us to do in-person training, which we had no problem doing, and that's what we do going forward. In fact, since we started that in-person training, that made the entire town now have to go on a yearly basis to that in-person training. So yes, we do consider all the members in our department, and we do as much training as we possibly can to make sure we are that, you know, highly respected department in the state of Connecticut, which we are.
If I can about the training in regards to this in-person training that we do for her. And you'll see it on your document that we go to the, it's in front of you tonight.
Yep.
The town, the New England Fire Department does not allow anyone. It's a mandatory requirement. And at the end of the time, we've extended, that last year, we had extended for six members to make sure that they got that time, that training completed, but they were suspended until they completed that training. Some of them had to go to Westbrook to get their training. So it was through her to make sure that we were staying on the same course. It wasn't like, oh, I can just do an online and skip that. So, and it was through tournaments to make sure that we were staying on the same course. It wasn't like, oh, I can just do an online and skip that thing. They had to do the in-person training before they were allowed back. So it's for some three months. So. On top of that, we still have online training that we do in addition to that we needed. And if there's an issue in the department, like if there's a driving issue, you know that, we do assign those other types of training to make sure those things are done. But when it comes to sexual harassment, we were at, it was questioned by the town consul. Me, some members, it wasn't the consulate cell. And we then ensured, just to make sure that we were doing it, the town now follows what we've done for training. They have somebody come in and do it. We're using tournaments. They're using outside.
Alright, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
And also, just two other things. Chief LaPierre is actually working with, uh, Shelley Carter, who is the, uh, fire chief of Camden. Who wants to start a woman program here in Newington, which is women in the fire service. Which is actually, she wants to hold the program here in the town of Newington. She reached out to us to get that to come to our town because we are so diversified here and what we do in our department. Secondly, we just sent one of our female firefighters out of state to go get trained on specialty equipment because she was looking to get a little bit extra training. We take extra care of making sure that they have what they need and they understand the process of how to use this equipment. So Juliana Bellin, Bellin, Bellanger actually just went out of town or is about to go out of town to do that training. So, uh, I just wanted that to be out there also.
Very good.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else like to speak under public participation?
Question on the pension plan. So, uh, Mr. DeMeo, you stated when you first originally ran for commission that that was going to be a meeting that you were calling with the finance department for the pension. Curious why it hasn't happened yet and you're stating now it's going to get dragged on to twenty twenty six. So, like past you, Trauma stated, the plan hasn't been touched since before I even, I came to the department. Sixteen years ago, I think he stated. So curious why we're only looking at a three-year plan to increase year over year when currently inflation, everything else like that goes up more than every year, more than the past three years. So we should be doing something a little bit better than that. Um, we probably should be getting a move on this ASAP, not waiting till twenty twenty six. And also, if we don't have, I know the older generation might have a pension plan. We don't have a pension plan. We actually have an annuity.
You have a 401K.
Correct. That's different than a pension. I've been in finance for over a dozen years now. There is a difference.
There is nobody in the department that has a pension plan.
Right.
Uh, past members stated that they have a pension. Now it's an annuity.
There was, there was sixteen individuals.
So they, so there is.
And, and the town of Newington's.
So there is pensions. Right. That's what I'm stating. You guys keep saying that we're going to get pensions, we're going to get pensions. Are we going to get a pension or are we going to get an annuity? I think we should have.
Enhancements to the 401K.
Correct. Okay. Well, on your agenda, you have a pension. That's why I'm stating. Everyone keeps saying, well, you guys get pensions.
It's our 401K.
We don't have pensions. I just want the record straight. Everyone thinks that they're going to get this money for the rest of their life because they served so many years in Newington. That is not the case.
Absolutely. We will make sure that that is corrected.
I mean, it'd be great if you guys went back to pensions. I think the fire department puts everyone in this room that's a firefighter puts sometimes more hours into this department than we do in our own job.
I didn't write, I didn't write up the agenda and had I, had I recognized or realized that the word pension was here, I would have certainly changed it.
It's just an old term that gets used. I just want everyone to know, so you guys get pensions, you're taken care of.
Everybody, everybody in this room knows and realizes what we're discussing.
But just for the outside public and everyone else, it's technically not correct. And also the update to rules and regulations. What exactly are you guys updating? Because this just got done a couple of years ago. The only thing we didn't touch as a committee was P M Ps.
And that's one thing where, that's one thing that's going to be looked at.
Now, are you guys changing anything else in the rules?
We don't know what we're changing yet. We have to, uh, call a meeting and we'll discuss that.
Everything is up for grabs and that.
Everything could be up for grabs.
Yeah.
Kind of concerning. We just did it a couple of years ago.
It was done, it was done in twenty twenty two. This is twenty twenty five. By the time all of these changes take effect, we're talking twenty twenty six. So I think looking at it in a, in a four-year time span, when it specifically states in the rules and regulations that it should be looked at every five years, we're doing it a year early.
Yeah, no, I mean, absolutely. It's just, uh, I'm just curious what else could be changed with.
There's a lot, there's going to be a lot on the board. That's all I'm going to tell you.
Right. I mean.
And it will all be boasted for a month before changes are made.
Do you guys think a special meeting on that to discuss if members have questions on it, things of that nature?
Absolutely. It will be brought up at.
Yes or no?
Commissioner, it'll be brought up at a commissioners meeting.
The answer to that is no, there's no special.
Special meeting, right.
Has to happen per the rules and regulations. Any changes that are made to the rules and regulations has to be posted for thirty days prior to their meeting. At that next meeting, there has to be discussions if anybody has any issue.
Right.
With the changes, meaning at the commissioners meeting, it has to happen.
Right.
But it has to be posted thirty days prior to the following meeting that is going to be brought up. So that it can be discussed. That's per the rules and regulations.
Correct. That's what I was getting.
And every change has to be noted.
Right.
So it has to be spelled out differently on a separate piece stating that it went from this to this?
Well, what it'll do, what most legal happens is, you know, it's crossed out and then this will be the change.
Just because, I mean, the rules and rights, they, they seems like they were solid when we were going for this past election and and the three of you actually promoted people that didn't meet that qualification. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we stick with them going forward. That the commission does because you guys do the appointments, not the chiefs, not the personnel, nobody else. It's ultimately up to you guys. So hopefully we stick to it going forward.
Chief LaPierre.
Just for clarification to everybody, the document that I produced with my ideas for increasing the pension or annuity, whatever you want to call it, um, that we currently have in this department. Did not have a three-year cap on it. It was for an increase every year. Just like any other insure, any, any other pension plan that has a COLA or whatever they have, most pension plans increase and that's how I that's how I verbalized it in the document I prepared for as an idea.
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah. Thanks, Tom.
Chief Drummer.
I'm confused. You say there's no pension. He says there is a pension. If there is not a pension, I want to know why we weren't notified that the pension was not there anymore. That's another thing to put on your book. Because as far as I'm concerned, sixteen people still have a pension.
Yes, they still have that.
And you're, you're not talking, you're talking through your teeth.
They still have their pension.
You just said there is no pension.
Not for new people. New people have a 401K.
That's not what you're saying. You're saying there's no pension. There is a pension.
There is for sixteen people.
And it hasn't been looked at in over sixteen years.
Correct.
I keep bringing it up every year and I keep getting the same answer. There is no pension. Well, if there is no pension, I want to know why I wasn't notified.
There is no pension.
There is a pension.
For new people.
New people, yeah, fine. But not for all people. It's still in effect. It's still working. And it should be an increase every couple of years.
Clarification. There is a pension for everybody who was in the department up until we changed to the new system. So if you look at, there were sixteen people who didn't get switched over. We still had one currently in our ranks as, is not collecting yet. Every other person that was in the department up to a certain date had their pension frozen.
Right.
And we all get a check every month from the old pension plan.
Correct.
I mean, just a suggestion, you might want to put on the agenda pension date from date and then the date from this date forward. So there's clarity. Because as a person outside, very confusing what you guys are talking about.
Right.
Just being.
Bubba, if I can speak to this.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Um, I was on the committee and everybody was notified. The town could not afford to continue a pension plan. And the town forced us to go to a 401K. It wasn't anything the commission did or anything the fire department did. The town did this because with a pension plan, you build up a, a required amount that you have to pay out and this becomes a liability to the town. So when everybody was on a pension plan, everybody was building up a liability. And the town couldn't afford to carry that liability. So what they did was they said, well, we will go to a 401K. And that's what we did. And there are a few people that still collect on the old pension plan. But we have no intention of making any changes to the old pension plan because the town won't allow it. So what we're talking about doing is improving the 401K. And making it something that's more palatable to all the members. Now, we can't really change the way it works because as a group, we invest. And then it gets broken out for our July month end, uh, June month end, excuse me. So it, 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 the way the thing works and what we're trying to do is increase the amount that gets budgeted to the 401K. So people are earning more money in their 401K. Is that clear enough?
Now, are you guys going into different funds or is this a thing that finance would end up having to do, whether we go into.
Finance, finance does.
So you guys have no say in what we do, no say in COLA? Because not for nothing, why isn't a past chief trauma getting a COLA every year?
Because the old pension plan did not have a COLA.
A COLA.
The old pension plan didn't even have a COLA.
Right, right. Because I, I can remember when I, when I turned sixty-two. I was sent a check from the.
When you turn sixty, when you turn sixty.
Sixty.
Yes, the old plan said sixty.
Yeah, was sixty and I remember receiving a, a check in the mail and that was it. Once I got the check, you're all done.
Well, the current system is terrible. I mean, they've messed up different balances on accounts, things of that nature. I mean, this, this town where you guys should be pushing for a completely different financial institution, in, in my opinion.
Part of the problem with looking at another, um, company is most of these other companies will require fees. This company doesn't. So money that's going into your account, you're not paying any kind of a fee to.
A lot of accounts don't off, uh, don't have fees anymore. That's old. That's old news. These new finance companies, one of the biggest ones is Schwab. There's no fees with it. I can get you thirty names in a week. That you can talk to financial advisors, different finance planners, things of that nature that can go town level. I mean, we should be using our resources here. You've got plenty of members in this department that are in finances that can help out, things of that nature.
Our finance director does a, does a great job. And, and investing, investing, investing the town's money.
Yeah.
We have no say in how this money is invested. Um, this is all taken care of by the finance department at the town hall, which.
You have to say, you have no voice.
And you're.
Doesn't fall on you.
S- s- Sal, do you, would you, you're getting a good rate of return on your money. If we went to what you're asking for, you'd be making a lot less money because.
Absolutely not. I know for a fact.
Oh, I know for a fact. I'm a financial planner for Pete's sake. You, uh, you. I have my series six, my series seven and everything else.
We're, we're, we're kind of putting the cart before the horse here and I'm getting off subject. So our, our financial department, which is headed up by Janet Murphy, does an absolute wonderful job for this fire department. And, um, I think we're going to leave it at that. So I'd like to. Pardon me? That's all in the town report at the end of the year. That's all in the town report at the end of the year. And I know that she did ask us for a motion a few months back. The commissioners, if you can remember, that, um, one of the, um, things that our money was invested in, there was another plan that was making better money and she asked us for a motion to switch that money. And that motion was, um, made, seconded and approved. And a letter was sent to Mrs. Murphy at the finance department to do such a thing. So she advises us what should be done with the money in the town that's invested for these firefighters. And, uh, the way it's been going, it's been very good for the.
Down what's invested, whether it's.
You, you can, you, if you want to call the town and ask the town. Should be public information. So you can do that on your own if you'd like.
Just when you talk, the, the problem that we're having and I understand where Sal's coming from, just a third party that feels about shape work, piece of it. Um, you make a lot of mistakes. You have to be reminded to send paperwork out. Just, just look into that, please.
Yes, and I know.
We had issues with that. They sent out, they sent out wrong statements.
Yeah.
We had to have them send it out again because it caused a lot of heartache with people because they had a lot less money in their accounts than what was originally supposed to be in there. So please, just look at that piece of it, talk, talk to finance and see if there, there's something we can do there because it's been nothing but a headache for me as well. But we know paperwork and getting the right paperwork to you guys as well.
Chief Stegmaier, where we have the money is not the person, is not the company that does those reports.
Oh, correct, right, correct, right. This is a third party that.
The third party that.
They just give the statements. That's all they do.
And we can definitely look into that to get a better company that does better reporting.
I, 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 they, they caused a lot of heartache with this department and the members who're setting up the law, um, statements.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Nico.
Nico.
One last question. For the, the sixteen members, is there just a way to include in the planning that you provide him like a supplemental? You know, addition. Obviously they can't touch it because it's locked in, but.
So.
Is there a way to provide them something additional to equate to what they would have gotten if they hadn't increased?
I can tell you that when we increase the stipend. Okay, so this is going back to an, another thing that you asked. Um, you know, we kind of try to set priorities. Um, but we did increase the stipend within the last few years. We went from a thousand to fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars. And all retired members with twenty-five years or more were included in that. So all retired members with twenty-five years or more did get the stipend increase. And we also increased the paper call substantially. For.
That has to do with pension.
Nothing, but he was asking about priorities with pensions and this and that. So we did increase the stipends. We did increase the paper call. And now we're working on the pension.
We will, we will certainly ask.
All we can do is ask.
Exactly right.
So.
We usually don't talk, but I just wanted to say on the town side. All new employees, after I believe, I don't remember what year it is, they don't have a pension either. They have a 401K. And in our union right now, we probably have about sixteen people who are on the old pension plan. And we do not get a cost of living out of that.
Yeah.
So that's the town side. I just thought that was important to know.
I retired twelve years ago for the town and I'm just speaking personally for myself. What I left with at the town is what I get today. I have no cost of living increase.
We tried, but.
And that's how it's been and that's what it is. And.
And as far as the rate of return that I was talking about, it was what's on paper, what got delivered twice, two different numbers, things of that nature. So I didn't know it was a third party different from our financial institution.
Yes.
But they were stating that we were making negative rates of returns, losing money, that only a three-point-six percent rate of return. It, it was it's all over the place. Yeah.
So just so you made a comment about the fee, if we go to another vendor.
Yeah.
Just, you know, I have a 401K and I, I pay a fee.
Right.
But I pay the fee because that person's full-time job is to make sure I make money. The finance director's full-time job is not to make sure.
Okay, but. Here's, here's the thing with the, here's the thing. here's, here's the thing with the, here's the thing with the fees. So, you know, somebody thinks a 401K and that there's these thousands of dollars that are put into the, this plan for our firefighters that are eligible for this plan. The fees, if we went with this, would eat up the funds that were put in there and it would probably cost the member money. Because you're talking very little bit of money that gets put into this plan. Like two hundred dollars a year. So i- i- it's very minimal. I, I can't say exactly what the, what gets contributed, but it's very limited.
That's per individual.
Right.
We don't speculate what the town does and what everything's doing. We really shouldn't be talking about it. We should just move on with it.
Yeah.
I agree. Any else, thing else under public participation? Kim Rata. Congratulations for being elected again. And Nancy Coppola, congratulate, are you going to be our liaison? Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome aboard.
And that's all I wanted to do and to say that I am going to continue as a Democratic liaison and wanted to give counsel.
Thank you.
To.
Thank you.
So the second Thursday of every month, um, if they didn't tell you.
The location is always here. I think in December it's going to be.
Except December.
Yeah, except December. We meet at the Old Firehouse.
Old Firehouse, um, it's kind of our little Christmas get-together. At the Old Firehouse has been tradition for a number of years.
And the Old Firehouse is that corner in Nantucket, if you're not aware.
Yep. Thank you.
So welcome and thank you and congratulations on your, uh, newly appointment to the town council.
Newly election.
Um, is that it for public participation? Okay, I'm going to close public participation and go to commissioners' remarks. Commissioner Stoddard.
Yes, there's one subject I'd like to address. Um, I hope all of you judge me based on your interactions with me, not what some hacker puts on social media. And that's all I'm going to say about that because none of it's true. But I also want to say that I'm very proud of the fire department. You guys do a tremendous job and I'm glad to be re-elected to the commission. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
All right.
Wow, um, first and foremost, I want to thank, um, the members of this department, um, day in and day out. I know that, you know, you guys and ladies put your lives on the line. This is a one tremendous and outstanding department. I am proud to be a member of, of this commission thanks to the voters, uh, this past, um, November fourth, uh, for re-electing me to the position of fire commissioner. Um, I will strive to do my best that I possibly can to make sure that, um, we follow our, all of these rules and regulations. And, uh, we have a program that we're going to be setting up looking at, um, a three to five-year plan that we've already started to discuss, um, because over the next four to five years, there's a tremendous amount of work that this department needs to accomplish. Um, we've got two building projects. We've got apparatus, uh, that needs to be replaced. Here again, the pension is, we know it's a sore spot and, you know, we're going to certainly work our butts off to make sure that this is, uh, gets addressed in a timely fashion. Um, dealing with rules and regulations and a bunch of other things, but I want to thank everybody for putting their trust in me uh, for the next four years. And, uh, I look forward to, uh, working as hard as I possibly can to make sure that we accomplish what we set out to do. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, I'd just like to, uh, start off by, uh, congratulating, uh, Commissioner Stoddard and Commissioner DeMayo, uh, for their election. Um, I think we've worked really, really good together. Um, I appreciate your camaraderie, your, uh, your expertise and your, uh, friendship. So, um, thank you and congratulations for winning. Um, I'd also like to say, um, you know, you hear a lot of stuff on Facebook about this and that. But, but that, that's really all it is. It's somebody that sits behind a keyboard and can say whatever they want and use an anonymous name and, uh, just throw something and hope it sticks. Um, this department is by far, I'm just going to say it, one of the best departments in the state of Connecticut. Um, we didn't get a class two rating because we're a bunch of hacks, that's for sure. And this department led by this command staff and Chief Trauma is second to none. There's departments in this state that would die to have the membership, the training, the equipment and the command staff that we have in this department. I go, I'm quite active going to other towns. And I walk in there and, and they're like, bubba, we, we can't believe your department. We can't believe the training. We can't, can't believe how many members you have. Um, there's fire departments in this state that are volunteer that are closing down every month. There's departments throughout the nation volunteer that are closing down every day. And to have a hundred-member strong department, well-diverse, well-trained and well-equipped has got a lot to be said for the town of Newington. So you guys, you people behind these keyboards that throw stuff out and see if it'll stick. We know how good we are. Our chiefs and our members know how good we are. And I just wanted to make sure that that was brought up because, uh, our residents and our, our members and our residents is this commission's main concern and the safety of everybody in this town, whether it be a resident, a visitor, a worker. It doesn't make a difference. We, we treat you with absolute full respect like it is in our mission statement. So, um, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Uh, be safe. Remember, don't fry any turkeys close to your house or in your garage or on your decks. Do it way out in the lawn somewhere if you're going to do it and be safe. We, uh, we would like our members to enjoy Thanksgiving too and not have to, uh, if we have to, we'll be there, but, uh, let's all be safe for, uh, the hal- upcoming holiday season. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor? All right. Thank you.